I'd like to call to orders the April 3rd, 2019 meeting of the Committee of the Whole of Pottstown Borough Council. Would you kindly rise for a moment of silence followed by the pledge to the flag? Okay, under the Subcommittee Reports Infrastructure, Vice President Culp.
Starburst.
Okay.
Okay. We had our meeting on 21st of March. Parks and Rec, they're looking into redoing the Ricketts Roof. That came in pretty high, so they want to rebid that. There could be a possible grant involved, and maybe a late grant possibly. Spruce Street's playground, it'll be done this year in the spring. Pollock Park has a good response from DEP, kicked back, they okayed the work and stuff. Memorial Park Phase III is up to plan, and the playground equipment is good. Non-essentials are left out because it got a little expensive. Manitani Green going to be managed by a carousel. And the WWII cannons will be refurbished, will be put by the WWII Memorial. Okay, licensing inspection, all's well's there. Rentals are, our program is good with the building permits. Lots of activity, new construction, renovations, things at the Hill School. Public Works is doing their finals on the paving list. And new people in Connection on High, new things for the New York Building, and that's about all I have.
Very good. Thank you. Economic Development, Ms. Lee Clark.
Good evening, councilors, Madam Mayor. So, that's true. Monsonos is moving into where the old Connections on High, and if you drove by Connections on High today, what was Connections on High, you will see that the lettering is being removed from that window. So, they are close to moving in, as well as the Little Jim proceeds. So, the Little Jim will be in there as well. Farmer's Market continues to expand, although we're told by the owners that it won't be called Farmer's Market for forever. And the last thing I want to talk about is Pottstown Plating. Because with the beauty of social media, somebody came to me and said, "Hey, look, this friend of mine that was two years before me in high school started talking about plating works, and why isn't something being done about it?" So, in addition to council, I guess I'm addressing the public that there is something, that building is extremely, and that property has been a challenge, but we certainly are moving through. We have had several meetings with the RDA, and PAID has been working through those remediation efforts. So, environmental work, the Phase Ones and Phase Twos are going on there. It is proceeding. It is slower than we would like, but that's the way things work sometimes. So, it's in our sights, and absolutely there is a solution on the horizon.
Very good.
That's my report.
Thank you. Transportation.
We had a meeting today, and the report will be ready for Monday.
All right. Ad-hoc zoning, Councilor Prosser.
We discussed, you know, driveways and off-street parking, but majority of the meeting was, discussed the noise ordinance, which is prepared for you tonight.
Good. And the ad hoc financial sustainability, Councilor Kirkland.
We're waiting for a report.
Okay. Under the boards, emergency services. Okay, hearing none. Human relations, Ms. Levingood.
Good evening, councilors, Council President, and Madam Mayor. The Commission recently prepared and approved goals for 2019, and the goals are tied to the duties of the Commission outlined in the Borough Ordinance. April is National Fair Housing Month, focusing on ending housing discrimination and raising awareness on fair housing rights. The Commission's next meeting will be held on April the 9th, 2019, at 6:00 PM, and that will be in council chambers, and all are welcome to attend.
Very good. Land Bank, Ms. Penrod?
Not here. I can give an update on the Land Bank, because I do, I'm not a part of the Land Bank, but I do attend those meetings. And essentially, there are a variety of issues discussed. The Land Bank did pass a conflict of interest policy at their last meeting, so they're prepared to move forward with that.
Wonderful. Thank you. And Library, I guess Ms. Penrod is not here. Anyone else from the Library?
She asked me to read this for her, is that okay? All right. So, the Pottstown Regional Library is having their charity auction on Saturday, May 4th. The auctions cost $10, from 6:00 to 9:00 PM. The chairs will be on display at the Library for bidding beginning April 1st, and they're going to auction off 20 chairs. There are 1960s library chairs that are going to be painted in unique book themes, and all proceeds will benefit the Library. So, please come on out, and there will be refreshments and drinks served.
Wonderful. All of it Boys and Girls Club, Councilor Kirkland.
Yes, we'll have a quick update from the next director.
All right.
Thank you, Councilmen and Woman. I just wanted to quickly mention that we're really excited to announce that we'll be beginning to offer some weekend programming, starting this April 20th. And April 27th will be opening on Saturday, those Saturdays, for the children. So, the children, the youth that are members of our club can come from 10:30 to 2:30 on those days, and participate in some fun activities, and that'll be, we hope, a positive diversion from some of the negativity and the unfortunate things that have been passing, happening in the neighborhood. So, beyond that, our after-school program is continuing strongly. We have great programs, running an awesome drama club, sign language classes, soccer, you name it, where the kids are having a great experience there. We look forward to continuing to offering that to them. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good. Pottstown School District, Councilor Lindsay.
The Edgewood Town Hall meetings are listed on the School District, the Pottstown School District website. So, if you missed it, you can always go back and check that out. I also seen a presentation from the middle school principal, who was really informative of what's going on in the middle school, and what things that they are having to put together for the kids. So, I did ask him to come to one of our meetings to show us the presentation, because it's really good that, you know, he's developing a plan for the middle school.
Okay.
That's all I got.
Great. Thank you. With that, the Mayor's Report.
Okay. So, the last, end of last month, and I guess yesterday, I discovered two new things in Pottstown. I got to, we had our rotary B-to-B mixer at the Red Horse Motoring Club, which I can't believe I haven't been there. It's so cool in there. You go, you pay a membership fee, then you have like a key, and free beer, and it's a gorgeous building. It was really nice to see, that was our biggest business mixer in rotary. I think there was over 70 to 100 people there. So, it's a nice space. And I also met with the Costellos, the investors in Pottstown, last night at The Avenue, which is the new Caribbean restaurant, which is delicious. It's like the Caribbean Henry's, I have to say. I can't believe I haven't been there, but you should go out and try it. Coming up, we have a busy April. So, if I miss anything, it's all posted on Facebook, my platform, Pottstown's platform. Because we have, this weekend is Manitani Still Works' 5th Anniversary Celebration, and they are doing their first-ever Whiskey Wag pageant, to include the best-dressed rescue pooch, the dog who most resembles a barrel, and for aged and unaged canine companions. I expect everyone on Borough Council to be entering their dogs in this contest this weekend. I will be judging. Manitani Still Works is a state-of-the-art distillery making spirits handcrafted on the same banks where the Lenape Indians once drank. Manitani, which was first named by the Lenape Indians as the place we meet to drink, still means the same today. So, I will be presenting Manitani Still Works with a proclamation on April 6th, declaring April 6th, 2019, as Manitani Still Works and Whiskey Wag Day in the Borough of Pottstown. After that, we have, there are three community meeting discussions. One is April 9th, from 7:00 to 9:00, at Connections on High, which is 238 East High Street. They're doing another meeting, the same place, on April 18th, from 7:00 to 9:00 PM. And then again, on April 20th, from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM. And everyone is welcome to come. If you can please email and register, so they have enough drinks and refreshments and seating. Rock the Block is Saturday, April 13th, starting at 8:00 AM. Registration, if you can pre-register, that would be great. Go on Pottstown Community Action's website, or Habitat's website, you can register there. You will receive a free t-shirt and lunch for the day. It's going to be from 9:00 to 2:00, the 400 Block of Chestnut, and that is on the corner of Chestnut and North Franklin Street. It is a huge event. We already have 80 volunteers coming to help clean up Pottstown. Unfortunately, I am not going to be able to make it. So, I was going to ask Ryan, I'd hate to put you on the spot, I didn't know if you were planning on being there on the 13th. If I deputize you, would you please do the closing remarks for me?
Sure.
Thank you.
The best part would be her.
I'll give you my sash, you'll do great. Sorry. Thanks. I'm really sorry, I can't make it. I will be in New York, celebrating my mother, and, but as you all know, Pottstown Community Action is near and dear to my heart. So, if you can all go on my behalf and please help clean up, I would greatly appreciate it. We also have the Climate March, and Eco Fest, and a whole lot of other things going on in April, so please come out. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. And how about from our manager?
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Keller?
Thank you. First, I'd like to recognize the Borough staff, the Safety Committee, and the HR Department for their diligent efforts to reducing risk and liability for the Borough. We were recently awarded with this Risk Management Safety Award from PERMA, the Pennsylvania Intergovernmental Rental Risk Management Association, for our use of their Lost Control E-Library, along with other PERMA risk management materials such as pool-sponsored webinars. The Borough's use of training resources, claims history, and risk management commitment placed Pottstown among the top 10 members out of 620 members. So, a big, big thank you to that for reducing our risk, which, at the end of the day, helps us keep the taxes in check.
Yay! That's a good thing.
And also, just an update, the changes to the downtown parking were passed, and they're going to be tentatively rolled out on May 1st. So, we hope to have all the signs in place. We've been working behind the scenes with Park Mobile to get the phone and the web-based application payments up and running. And we'll be implementing the paid parking through the app in all of our parking lots. Along with that, we're going to be installing new wayfinding signs as you approach the parking lots, and then also large introductory signs at each parking lot location, so that visitors can more easily find where to park in town. We'll also be instituting paid parking on High Street. It'll still be a three-hour zone, but the first hour will be free. And if you recall, this had all originated through the Parking Committee, which was a group of local business owners and Borough staff and others that met to discuss how we can best address our parking needs going forward. Originally, that plan included the installation of paid parking on King Street, and at this time, we're going to hold off on paid parking on King Street, but we are going to move forward with the rest of the paid parking, street parking areas. Other than that, I had a good meeting with the NAACP last week. It was a very good conversation. We talked about diversity in the workplace, Ricketts Center, and potholes, among many other good conversations. So, I appreciated them inviting me, and I look forward to a continued dialogue on that front. We did have the ribbon cutting for the Colbert Dale, I think that was two weeks ago. So, thanks to those that came out. Their tentative construction schedule is supposed to last through October, when they are expected to wrap up with that. And we're still, our consultant is still working on the Management and Financial Audit, or the EIP, study. In order to allow appropriate review time, they were originally going to present that study on Monday. They've now changed that to come and present at the May 13th meeting. Mainly, they want to make sure that they have all the, you know, information factually correct, and that has time to be checked over by all the appropriate people before they release it. And then, finally, I do want to just remind everyone that it is tax season, and we are accepting new payment forms in the tax office, along with new tax hours. So, the tax office is located in the Finance Department on the second floor. It will be open from 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM on the dates listed on the slide, so you are able to walk in and make payments on those dates. For all other times and options that people would wish to make a payment, you can pay it online through Pottstown.org. You can send it in via mail, USPS, or you can drop it in the Dropbox, which is a locked location in the Finance Department on the second floor. If it's after hours, we also have a Dropbox location in the Police Department. However, I would encourage everyone, if they have any questions about the new payments method, please, please don't ask the Police Department, because they're busy catching criminals, and come up to the Finance Department to ask questions. So, if there's any other option, or if there's any other questions, I'd be happy to talk to anyone after this about that.
That it?
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we have a presentation, the Children's Discovery Center, Beth Dirks.
Good evening. My name is Beth Dirks, and I have Jennifer Brown with me, and Karen Hudson. And we have a dream for Pottstown. Dream, I'm sorry, I guess I'm ahead of the game here, I'm talking away. Here you go. We have a dream for Pottstown. A dream of a place where children of all ages and races will learn through play and exploration, and environment design just for them. A place with interactive learning experiences about health, exercise, emotional wellness, science, and the world around here. The ideas are endless. Our vision is to revitalize a downtown building into a brightly colored space with wide-open, interactive, where they can do hands-on experiments and experience Pottstown and the surrounding area for our local children. It would be a place where children will find safety, they can collaborate, they'll be able to experiment and share the importance of teamwork, encouragement, community, and culture. So, why a children's museum? We would like to become a partner for our local schools. We want to see the curriculum come to life and inspire children to learn. We want to help set kids down a path to a fulfilling career. And data shows that children who attend museums at an early age actually go on to improve test scores in reading, math, and science. Also, museums help to close some of the gaps with social services, and they cater to students with disabilities, American Sign Language, and also English as a second language. We also want to be a part of the economic revitalization for Pottstown. Thirty-five percent of museums are flagship revitalization projects, and they're also job creators. They support nearly three-quarters of a million jobs. And museums also give back more than they receive. For every dollar that they receive in federal and state funding, they generate $5 in tax revenue. Cultural tourists also tend to spend more than other tourists, and this would help bolster the local economy. And speaking of bolstering the local economy, why Pottstown? Our location's ideal. There are 557,000 students within 50 miles of Pottstown, and this doesn't even include students from Philadelphia, Delaware, and New Jersey. And we have ample space awaiting revitalization. And our currently lower property values mean that we can get more building for our money, and that we would have more leftover to spend on exhibits and programming for children. And the revitalization efforts have already begun here, as encouraged by Peggy. There have been 12 new businesses in the past two years that have come to Pottstown, and there are four more to come in the next six months. And we already have tourism anchors in place, including the Carousel, Manitani Gulf, the Steel River Playhouse, the Colbert Dale Railroad, Memorial Park, and the many festivals that occur there every year. And of course, Pottstown kids are in need. Thirty-six percent of them live at the poverty level or below, and most of them live in single-family households. They need a cultural offering here on their doorstep and opportunities to become involved. Our region as a whole can definitely support a cultural center such as this. We are in the second most, Montgomery County has the second highest per capita median family income in the state, second only to Chester County, our neighbor, and Bucks County, which is third. Additionally, that there is another opportunity to serve our community. We would like to become a certified autism center, which would mean that we would be promoted nationally as a center that is trained with staff and has exhibits that support the need of the autism spectrum community. Autism is one of the fastest-growing developmental disorders in America, and one in 68 kids actually suffer from this disorder. Montgomery County actually has the highest diagnosis rates behind Philadelphia and all Gating counties. And to further support our location, we are perfectly positioned. You would have to drive at least an hour or more in any direction to visit a learning center of this type. And in the middle, we've put a little dot for where our museum would be. To the north, you have Allentown, Bucks County, which is out to the east, and then you'd have to go to Lancaster, or Delaware, or Philadelphia for the police truck for something of this nature. So, let me show you what we would like this to look like. This is a very simple floor plan that we've put together, which just shows the types of exhibits that we want to have. You can see the very center there would be where we'd have our building blocks, and you'll get to see more pictures on the next slide. But this just gives you an idea of what would be there. We'd have some STEM labs, we could have, we can have health and wellness, world cultures, all of this is, you know, under investigation, and we're looking at all kinds of different exhibits that we can have. We also, this is really exciting, we started to work with Penn State students, we were just there two weeks ago, and they're going to give us some renderings and give us their ideas on what the museum could look like. So, we hope to, in the fall, probably at the end of the fall, closer to November, have some pictures and some 3D models that have been put together for us. So, that's kind of the whole thing. Let's look at the next slide, which shows, will give you an idea of what some of the, here's some of an idea of what some of the exhibits can be like. If you look at that one on the top with the blue blocks, those are called big blue blocks, and they're just wonderful, kids love them. They're extra-big-sized foam, easily moved blocks that they can build, any kind of array, any kind of design if they want. The stairs there actually play music, you can see, it looks like a piano, and it plays as you step on it, it plays the notes. Very cool. And these are all interactive play sensory toys that would be, could, could be in music. Examples. The next one is health and wellness, this shows we have dental, that's particularly important to me, dental, medical, exercise, health and wellness, nutrition, those are the types of things we like to have. If you're thinking, think about the police truck museum, if you've been there, that's the type of thing we're looking at. And the next one, professions, we want to include, you know, the health professions, farming, the kids love the grocery store, and the kitchen, where they can go and actually pretend they're cooking it. Okay, let's look at the next one, I think it's STEM. Yeah, so these, we want to have some STEM experiments, experiments for little kids, older kids, they can do engineering, building, mathematics, science, those are the kinds of things that we're looking to have. And next, we have the, our opportunities that are possible for revenue from the very get-go, from the second we open up, we can have a party space that you can rent out, that would be for birthday parties, and also summer camps, which you can hold over the summer, that would be particular, like this week is, you're going to learn about insects, the next week is going to be about space, you know, you can charge for those. Event space, we'd like to be able to move all of the exhibits to the side, and be able to have space available for corporate events, weddings, proms, that type of thing. A gift shop is a possibility, and of course, a cafe where you can take a break and have some lunch, or just someone from the neighborhood could stop and eat.
So, we had this idea, and we wanted to get out in the community and see what other people thought about it. So, we partnered with already-established organizations in town. We were part of the Go Fourth Festival at Morde Park last year, and we had water beads out for the kids to play with, and they just loved them. And we got to talk to parents, grandparents, and teachers around, and we had overwhelming support, and just people are so excited, and, you know, they asked where this is located, and when it's opening, and, you know, we told them, "We're hoping to be right in downtown, and we're hoping to open by 2021." That's our, that's our goal and our dream. And people around are just so excited and want to help. We've had lots of other events already, we were part of the Sidewalk Talk Festival, the Community Block Party, we did Hometown High with Community Arts, and we were a part of Hometown Holidays with Tida. Our new New Year's Eve event was our biggest event, we had 150 kids, we just had them come, we had parties, we celebrated New Year's Eve, this was at the Carousel, and we had a countdown, and a balloon drop, and they just got to experience New Year's, and the mercury actually covered that, so that was very exciting for us, too. Our most recent event was our Susan STEM event, we had 55 kids, we did different activities with them, science experiment, and building, and stacking, and all sorts of fun stuff, and each kid got to go home with a book and crafts that they made, and it's been so fun to get out in the community and... and all sorts of fun stuff. And each kid got to go home with a book and crafts that they made. It's been so fun to get out in the community and meet the kids and be hands-on with the kids that are hopefully going to be in our museum someday. And we're just, we keep planning events to keep getting our name out there, and our next event, we're going to team up with Mosaic and plant stuff with the kids, flowers or vegetables or whatever. It'll be fun.
Of course, all that wonderful is cost money, so the last line there is our budget is what it looks like. We would like to purchase a building in downtown, although we're taking that thing across about $500,000, $1,000,000. And then, the biggest expense is the revitalization of that building, turning it into a museum, making the exhibits, and developing the space. So you can see that's almost $1 million, that's what that's going to cover. Then the rest of those things, the legal fees and the development and marketing, and the administration is kind of secondary to that. But it's about $1.7 million that we are seeing and going to be working on, basically, to do that. We have a couple of things in mind. One thing that we're really starting out is how our founding, our founding 50, which we're going to be asking people in town for $1,000 each. They're going to be our founding 50. The first 50 people are going to get their name on the plaque, and it's going to say, "Founding 50," and the seconds you go in the museum, their names are going to be there. So we're going to be out and about and talking to people about what's going on, and about what we want to do. And we're all, we're very excited about it. We have, do we have another slide? No, I'm sorry, you don't have another slide. Last thing, last thing. You all have the exact booklet that we did in front of you. You also have a one-pager, which has more, a little different information, and we gave you a pin, too. Hey, feel free to wear that around town, and people will say, "What's that pin? What's that about?" And you can tell them. We also, if you're interested in being on our mailing list, or email, not mail, because it's not an email list, we have cards here that you could fill out. And also, we'd love to have feedback. If you have any feedback, you guys are in the community, you are, you know, constituents, you know what's going on. If you have any ideas that you'd like to share with us, we'd be happy to, you know, happy to have that. And that's it. I'm willing, I don't know if we can take questions for anyone, or if that's, we'd be happy to do that, if anything happens.
What gave you this idea?
I went to a museum in York, Pennsylvania with my grandkids, and just really enjoyed it. It was a, it's called the Fern Center, and it's, has somebody heard of it? Oh, I thought somebody, yeah, okay. And so it was, it's all on health and wellness. And it was amazing. The kids are, it's very interactive, and the kids really learned, they really enjoyed it. It was an hour of 100% interactive learning. You know, there was someone who, whoa, huge, I'm in the health and the dental profession, so this was in me, huge mouths with a big toothbrush, and the kids could brush, and they could floss this thing, and, you know, and talk back to them. It was all just, anyway, so that's what gave me the idea. I just thought, there's nothing close to that here in Pottstown. You know, you have to go to, you know, Jenny showed you how far you have to go to get to something like that. It just seemed like the right thing. And then I just sort of started talking to people, and said, "Well, let me think about this idea, let me think about that idea." And everyone was like, "Yes, that sounds great." And so that's how it started, and there were about six of us that started meeting once a month for breakfast, and we sort of just talked it around about, and we kept going. And Health and Wellness gave us a planning grant for $10,000, so we've been using that for a little less than a year, and I've written another grant to be able to move on to the next step. We went to an Association of Children's Museums conference last year in Raleigh, North Carolina, and it really got us excited and gave us lots of ideas. And this year, we're going to Denver in about a month for the other, for another conference, and we have a whole lot more educational questions to ask this year than we did last year, because we've been doing this for about, about a year now, trying to, you know, get things started. So this is what you see. This is what you see. You see the result of a year's worth of discussions.
Have you gone to the school districts at all?
I have, yeah. I've spoken to the principal at BARK, and the teachers have given us some ideas, and that's one of the things that we're going to try to do in this next year, is actually create an interactive STEM, like a field trip that we can take to them, instead of taking, instead of them coming from the field trip. So it would be interactive with the kids and the teachers, going to ask the fourth-grade teachers what they'd like us to write, you know, have some discussions with them. And so, yes, I've done some discussion, and I've talked to Stephen Rodriguez briefly at a couple of meetings, and he thinks it's a great idea. We haven't had a real sit-down.
What are the ages for this museum?
We would start with ages from like 2 to 10, and then we'd like to expand it, because what we've learned is that if you don't have it expanded into older ages, what will happen is the parents, the older kids will say, "There's nothing there for me to do," so they won't want to, won't want to go. So we will expand it. We want to have a building of about 20,000 square feet, and start with 10,000 square feet, and then be able to expand to 20. So that, that's where we did the expansion.
Sounds wonderful.
What location did you find?
We have a location in mind. It's, right now, it's kind of a matter of having money. We need to, you know, really feel like, the first thing to do is purchase a building, and the location is on High Street, close to the Carousel and all those things down that way. Yeah. And it's perfect, it's a little over 20,000 square feet, two floors, so we could, we could develop the first floor, and then the other, the second.
Do you know how much it will cost per person?
Like the tickets? Tickets? Yeah. The research that we've done, the tickets are anywhere from like $8 to $12. Some museums do it, like they have different prices for adults and children, different price, you know. We haven't quite figured that out, but the, a cool thing that we want to do is have what's called museums for all, which is if the, if people are on any kind of state insurances, then they get in for like a flat, or free, one or one and the other. I think it's like $3. So it's really, really reasonable, and that's something that we're going to try to do. Actually, the grant that we just wrote for the foundation is having some scholarships for children that are part of the backpacks, Operation Backpacks, you guys have all that with that program? So kids that are in that program, they would get some scholarships to some of our upcoming events, because some of them are paid events that we're having. And so we're hoping to get a forward one visa, have her be to make like a scholarship available.
Do you think you'll be offering memberships, you know, like the zoo?
Absolutely, absolutely. Yes, we would do that, like $100 for a year, for a family, something like that.
Now, this isn't going to be like, I don't just say, this isn't going to be like where parents could just drop their kids off and go. This has to be parent-interactive, right?
Yeah. Not a daycare type of thing, no.
So it's like the Please Touch Museum in Philadelphia?
Or like, yeah. There might be, there might be programming on that order, you know, like you would say, like the summer camp kind of thing that we're talking about, that would be that sort of thing, or even like the programming, you know, "Saturday morning, we're doing this program from 10 to 12, and you're going to, you know, about, and you're going to come and, you know, do that." That might be that kind of thing also, but no, it's not.
Will this be organized as a nonprofit?
It will be, yes. One of the cool things that we like to do, though, as a nonprofit, as soon as we start to make, you know, a profit enough to sustain ourselves, is give back to the community. So we would like to come up with a percentage so we can give back to the school district, because we know that the school district is really in need. We haven't exactly determined what that would be, but as soon as we get to that place, we'd like to do that, because that's what we're about. We want to be educational and give back to the community.
Okay. Any other questions?
My wife took my boys to the STEM reading. She said there was a lot of opinions.
Oh, yeah? Oh, cool, great.
You're good, thank you. Now, our own Michael Leonard talk about our newsletter.
Well, that is a tough act to follow. Mine's not nearly as exciting as that. No, I'm afraid not. I don't have anything for you, except some brief information, and I will keep it brief. I wanted to talk just a little bit about the Borough Newsletter, as much for the benefit of viewers at home as your own. First and foremost, the Borough Newsletter comes out three times a year. It's a great source of information for all of the activities that you see going on in Pottstown, and even the greater Pottstown region, for both kids and adults. We put a lot of information in there. Wanted to say, it's not just for that, there's also important Borough information that gets expressed through that, such as policy changes and whatnot. We post it there as well. So we aspire for this to be a very informative document for everyone in the borough. That said, you'll notice that last year, the print version of the newsletter was discontinued. This was just too costly for us to continue to do at this time. Three times a year, at about $4,500 an issue, that's printing and mailing and design fees, it was upwards to $14,500 a year. We couldn't continue to sustain that, so what we've gone is, gone and done is gone to an all-digital format. This allows us to do it less costly. We can use technology, use the internet, and use our own resources, which is a very good website that we do have, to make that available to everybody who can get access to a computer, and use the library computers as well for this purpose. I wanted to do a brief demonstration of how easy it is to sign up for notifications. Notifications will let you know when a new Borough Newsletter is posted on the website. So I'm just going to demonstrate that here. Okay. So very simple, you're just going to open whatever browser you choose. I was never very good at typing in school, so I can't talk and type at the same time, apparently. All right, you're going to type in www.pottstown.org. And what you want to do is sign up for notifications. I'm doing this here. Right on the front page, you see a big button here, notify me. All right, we have a bunch of options here for things that we can sign up for, but it's very simple. You just put your email address in here, and you're going to see. All right, let's see if I typed that correct. That is my email address. I'm just going to sign in. So I have two options here. I can receive HTML emails, that'll tell me when there's a new newsletter posted on the website. I can also say that I would like to receive text notifications, in which case I will be able to enter my phone number here. I'm not going to do that for you today, but what I am going to do is sign up right here, the second one down, for notifications for the Borough Newsletter. Okay. And what it's going to do, it's going to tell me that I'm going to get an email at the email address I just registered here. It's going to verify that that is indeed a real email address, and from here on out, when there's a new posting on the Borough website with respect to the newsletter, I will get a notification, and I can follow the link, go to our website, and look at our newsletter right online. It's as simple as that. Would be the same deal with if you used your cellphone. You'll notice there's also a bunch of other things you can sign up for. This is a great tool. We have an excellent website. When I talk with some of the other municipalities in the region at our regional rec meetings, we're often complimented on our website, so it's something you should be proud of, that you have something that works well. This allows you to see a number of other notifications. But I'm here to plug for Parks and Rec, so I'll have the other departments up here for that purpose, they want to give their features. So one more thing I wanted to show is that if you want to just check out what we do have, it's very easy, again, I went to pottstown.org, I went to the departments, and right here at the top of the Parks and Rec tab, I have our newsletter. I click on that, and here I can view it all online. First item in our current issue is how to sign up for the Pottstown Newsletter and notifications. You see, we have our own programs, we have notifications of other programs, running a good example is Registration for Pottstown Little League, is a notification of the Bark for Life, which is April 27 in Memorial Park. This is really an excellent way to get information out. We understand that it is never going to be as effective as the paper copy that comes to your mailbox. It's just something we have to deal with right now, that this is the best course of action we have, and we're trying to keep the public informed that this is the way to get your information, so you don't miss anything. Finally, I want to note that the next issue of the Borough Newsletter will be issued at the end of April, so keep your eyes on your email boxes. Sign up in the next three weeks so that you get the notification when it is posted. And then, of course, the other great way to keep track of things in the borough, especially with Parks and Rec, is to follow us on Facebook, because we will also simultaneously post there as soon as the newsletter is posted on the website. And that's all I have to say for today. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to help you get out with those, but otherwise, just want to let folks know to keep looking online for that Borough Newsletter and all the interesting things we have going on in the borough.
Mike, if someone has an event that they want you to put in the newsletter, when would they need to get that to you by, or how do they go about doing that?
For this issue, I would need it by the end of next week. We do, right now, we just accept entries on nonprofits and groups of community interest, recreation pieces like that. There is intended to eventually be an advertising piece there for the newsletter. We're not pursuing that at this time, because we don't really feel, I don't feel we have enough circulation to justify charging people for the information of putting out there for that type of thing at this time. But if you do have something that's of community interest, a good example is we have a number of churches and nonprofits in town that run 5Ks in riverfront parks. So there's a good crossover of a public event that's public interest, there's a recreation component to it, in it, it's one of our own parks. You know, the profits from that are going to the organization, but the event at large is of interest to the Borough citizenry. So that's something that we would put in the newsletter, and we'll actually email those folks that have booked their 5Ks in our parks already to that effect.
So if a group is holding a community meeting, I just wanted to know how long they have before publication to get into.
Sure. They would want to get that to me by the end of next week, but it would not, you wouldn't want to count on it seeing the light of day until the last week of April. So if the meeting is between now and, say, the 25th of April, you probably don't have enough lead time for an appropriate advertisement. If you have meetings in May, June, this would be the issue to get. This issue will cover end of April, primarily May through September.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Vice President Kelpell about street paving for this year.
Okay. We often, well, we get many questions about our streets and our potholes and how they're taken care of. So I thought we could do this little presentation on our streets and potholes. Many residents inquire about why our streets are in the condition they are, and why we don't address all the problems. So here's how it works. The borough gets liquid fuel funds, which it's called, from the state every year. Now, I'm sure it's not just Pottstown, but most municipalities get that. And the money goes into a separate account for the maintenance of the roads in Pottstown, and that is all that it's allowed to be used for. Every year, Doug Yuriger, our Public Works Director, takes a tour of all the roads in Pottstown and makes an assessment of which ones are in dire need of repair. So we have a paving plan every year, and we have 60 miles of roadways in Pottstown that Pottstown is responsible for. Now, 19-plus miles of alleys, few alleys are ordained and adopted by the borough. Most are not adopted and are a responsibility of adjoining property owners. State roads are the responsibility of PennDOT. They are High Street, Hanover Street to Farmington Avenue, Charlotte Street, Arm and Hammer Boulevard, Manatoni Street, State Street, Mervine Street from Charlotte to Washington, West King Street from Manatoni to Route 100, Route 100, and Route 422. Now, three major funding sources cover paving costs on borough-owned roads. Liquid fuel funds, the borough authority via water and sewer main replacements, utility companies, mainly PICO, provided there are two lateral cuts within 50 feet on a borough-owned roadway. And only $25,000 of funding is allocated for maintenance on borough roadways, such as filling hot potholes. Now, that's just basically for the pothole issues, that type of thing. And what are the determining factors for prioritizing roadway repairs? All roads are inspected annually by the Public Works Director. Each section of road is given a rating from 1 to 5. The rating system is identified as followed. Now, see, is Doug going to do that, take that one, or?
All right. The rating system I have set in place for years now is a one-to-five rating system. All roads start out as number one after the first year of paving. This rating will be carried until the road starts to show signs of crack.
So, once the road, under number, item two, once the road starts to show signs of cracking, then it's elevated to a two condition. We go on, then, the road has multiple cracks in multiple locations, then it's elevated to a condition three. And then, under a four, the road has many cracks and starting to develop potholes. And then, a five being the worst, the road shows, has signs of multiple cracks, multiple potholes, and the road has a very uneven writing surface. The next page has a couple examples of the categories. The rating number two, you can see there's starting to be some cracking on the roadway. Under the three, there's a lot more cracking going on. Four, there's even more. In the distance, there are some potholes developing. And then, number five shows as bad as some of the number fives are in town. We also have, under that number five category, we have fourteen-point-three miles at this juncture of roads that I have rated at number five. On the next slide, you can see the blue is the number of miles we have. The orange is the number of miles of number five streets we have identified, and the gray is what we plan on doing this year with the amount of money we have allocated. You can see that, you know, there's almost a quarter of the roadways are in the five category. We're going to get three-point-seven miles this year, plus there'll be some that'll be added by the water and sewer projects. So, you know, we've got a long way to go, but we do have, the liquid fuel has been a vital asset, because otherwise it would have to come out of general fund capital money, which has been a difficult issue. So, we also coordinate, or we're attempting to coordinate, of course, we can't always control utilities. So, we carefully consider, consideration is given to planned underground utility projects to ensure that to the greatest extent possible that newly paved roads are not impacted by utility work in the near term. In some cases, necessity for underground utility work sometimes results in paving of roads with better overall payment ratings. So in other words, we can't control gas leaks. We can't control water main breaks. So, and it invariably happens, we notice you're paving a road and there's a gas leak, or we pave a road and somebody needs a, we have a water main break. So, those things are inevitable. We can't change them. We try and pick out the utilities that we know are in bad condition, and sometimes just doesn't work out that all the budgets line up in time to get to those vital infrastructure items. Prior to establishing the, under the annual paving plan, sewer mains are videotaped to analyze the condition of the pipes. Water mains and stormwater pipes are also analyzed. So, one of the advantage with sewer pipes, we can videotape every one of them. We look at them, we evaluate the condition, and again, I go to the one-to-five rating system, and so we have over seventy miles of pipe in our sewer system, collection system, and out of that seventy miles, fifty miles of it is clay pipe. Clay pipe is, is a nice pipe, but it's very brittle. And unfortunately, Pottstown's sitting on a lot of red shale, so a lot of those early pipes were laid just on the rock, and they have a lot of cracks in. But, right now, we're trying to go after all the pipes and just make sure that we have the integrity of the pipe in place, because it's not unusual to find cracks and holes and a variety of issues in the sewer system. So we can easily evaluate those and establish which street should not be paved until we get a new pipe in the ground. Certainly, right now, I can tell you there's many sewer pipes that we have conditions that are not good, and that's why some streets are not on the list yet, because we have to get new pipes in the ground before we pave. Of course, the trick's going to be, can we get those pipes replaced in time before the street turns into nothing but stone? You know, we try. The authority's got a good program in place for capital improvements on the water and sewer system, and that's helped out a lot in the last couple of years now. So, we, prior to establishing the annual paving plans, sewer mains, I did that one. The borough attempts to influence the schedule and location of underground mains replacements for the borough authority to roadways in need of repaving. However, the need to repave, repair leaking pipes can sometimes trump paving conditions. And that comes down to the, you know, sometimes, you're like, we don't want to do this, but we have no choice either. We need a bigger capacity pipe, we have a bigger main that breaks and just destroys the road. So there's conditions we can't help, even though the paving may be in fairly good condition. You know, the utilities, like, right now, we have the gas companies been out in Kyne Street, just digging all kinds of holes over there, looking for leaks, and now they've decided to put more new pipe in the ground. So they're, they've been extensive operation going over there to get to the bottom of their problems. So it's not just our infrastructure, it's other systems have difficulties also. Attempts to coordinate with PICO and other utilities are made to the greatest extent possible. And I'm sure PICO did not have that North Hill, South Hill area in their sites, but unfortunately, with all the leaks they've had, they've had to change the priority over there.
So, I just want to kind of give another example of what we're talking about with the rating system, and then the competing, sometimes competing priorities that we have for the underground infrastructure that sometimes override the paving system. So that's, that's why sometimes you can be driving, driving down a street and say, man, this street's in terrible condition, it's got to be a five. Why didn't they pave it this year? But the street, the next block down, is obviously a number three or a four, but they paved that one. A lot of times, the reason why that happens is because a pipe underground needed to be replaced, and that, that became more of a pressing need than paving the roadway, and we didn't want to pave the roadway and then go back two years later and have to replace the pipe. So, that's, that's kind of some of the thought process behind that. And we do try to coordinate with PICO and other utilities to the greatest extent possible when we're out there, but the problem is, is that their plans can change based on new information that they find, new leaks that they detect. So it's a constant game of chasing your tail, and we try to stay on top of it the best we can.
Okay. And, next, next layer. Carol, go ahead.
This year's program involves the following work that is planned by the borough. It should be noted that roadway paving is accomplished primarily through outside funding sources, as the general fund cannot absorb expenses for additional paving at this time. So our liquid fuel funds is nine-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars. Now, you'll be seeing another, another map that'll be showing some of the roads that we plan on doing. Now, we'll be doing three-point-seven-eight miles, and they'll be in red. They're the ones that we're going to most definitely, with the best of our ability, try to get done. The sewer main replacements, that's point-six-one miles, and that'll be in green. The water main replacements for 2019 to 2020 is point-six-six miles, and that'll be in a blue color. And PICO Gas Company will be, if they do lateral cuts, two in a fifty-foot section, they'll be in orange or yellow.
Yeah, and I'd just like to add with the sewer main and water main replacements, on number two and three, there's an error there, there should be a number three. They are expected to be started this year. We're not sure if the paving will actually be completed in 2019, but if it's not completed in 2019, it should be completed by the early part of 2020. And the reasoning for that is because they have to get in and do all of the pipe work before they can come in and do the paving. So sometimes it takes a little bit of time to gather their materials and do the excavating to get, to get the pipe in the ground. And if the asphalt plants are closed, by that time, it has to wait until, until the next year. So, if there are some of the water sewer ones that you see on the map that aren't paved this year, expect them to be taken care of early in the spring. And, you know, just by rough, rough calculation, to kind of lay it out for you, to pave a mile of roadway, on average, it costs about two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, plus or minus, just to give you an idea of the cost involved in paving a mile length. And that, that's just a, a top paving, that's not a full reconstruction by any means.
Now, what I had explained to you earlier, the red are the ones that we want to try to do our best to get done this year. The yellow and the orange is PICO. I don't see, the green is, that's the sewer, I believe. So, that's, and the blue is the water. So, that's how Doug assesses it from year to year. He does this all the time, every year, and assesses all the roads to see which ones need, need infrastructure done, or just the paving, or whatever. And as you see in the yellow, that's all state roads that are in the yellow. We, we don't pave them because the state comes in and they take care of those roads.
Yeah, just, just a slight correction. Most of the roads shown in yellow are state roads. So you see the big yellow section going north to south, that would be Hanover Street. There's also a portion of King Street, and then East High Street as well. The other section up in the, in the Rosedale section in the east, those are not state roads, but they will, will be, PICO will be conducting underground pipe work, and we're not sure to the extent of their repaving as of yet. Again, it depends on if they have more than two lateral cuts within fifty feet. That is what is prescribed in our ordinance, as to the criteria that would require them to replace a lane of pavement. And just to kind of highlight it for you a little bit here, the major roads that we're going to be repaving this year, one half of Circle of Progress, just about one half of Robinson Street, and then South Kyne Street from Industrial Highway up to Cross Street. Those are some of the kind of major thoroughfares that we'll be covering. There's a lot of other ones on here, and we can make this map available on our website if you'd like.
With fourteen-point-three miles of borough roadways rated at number five, what funding is left for alleys? Few alleys are ordained and adopted by the borough. Those not adopted are the responsibility of adjoining property owners. Previous court decisions have maintained that property owners with unordained alleys must allow other properties served by the alley through access. Alleys that are not adopted cannot use state liquid fuel funds for paving. Lack of borough funding has forced the borough to think creatively to find funding and resources to address alleys. Grant funding sources are available for alternative paving techniques, and the borough is developing several pilot programs that will be monitored and evaluated for future applications in alleys.
Yeah, so, you know, given our limited resources and ability to address alleyways, you know, we do understand it is a concern for a lot of our residents, and we're doing what we, what we can to try to address that without, you know, having the funds. Part of the problem is, is when we prioritize the paving, when you look at, if you look back on that number, I think, I think it was the fifteen-point-two or three miles of roadways that we have rated at a number five, and we're only going to get to about, you know, four or five of those miles this, this year. We really have to prioritize the paving of our more heavily-traveled roadways over the alleyways, and so that, that is why we are looking for these alternative methods on the alleyways, because we've really got to focus on our, on our thoroughfares. So, our first pilot program is using recycled millings. So millings are the pieces that get kind of ground off the top of the road surface during, during the construction before they put down the actual asphalt pavement. So after this milling takes place, there's excess material, and sometimes this material is disposed of, but Public Works had the foresight to actually try to reuse this material and use it to pave alley surfaces. So, you can see a picture of it here on the left. This material is a, is an aggregate material, and it's rolled out with a roller. There's not much binder quarter, course, or asphalt-type material left in it, but there still is a little bit that does hold it together somewhat. And we're currently testing the results, you know, in two different alleys right now. We've had some decent success after, you know, it's only been a year, but we're optimistic so far, and we're going to, based on that result, we're going to try a couple more alleys using, using the millings to see if we can get some more work done. The second pilot program is a driving surface aggregate. And a driving surface aggregate is actually a combination of aggregates consisting of different sizes that, when they're mixed together, they kind of interlock into almost a hard pavement surface. And this was actually a product that was developed by Penn State University, and, you know, compared to a regular aggregate, it has a lot less sediment loss, and it also holds up a lot better, requires a lot less maintenance over, over the long term. And this is kind of one of the paving alternatives that some of the grant funders are interested in funding. Poor's paving is another one that we've looked into. There are some challenges with that, because it has to be vacuumed, and we don't have that type of equipment on hand. But the driving surface aggregate seems to be a good option. You can see the photo here. This was an alley that was done in Telford Borough, and I'm actually happy to announce that the Montgomery County Conservation District did just award us two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars to install a driving surface aggregate on Erie Street. And the good thing about this project is it doesn't just include the aggregate, it also includes some drainage underneath of the alley, which should, should help not only the alley to last longer, but it also helps us meet our MS4 requirements. So, if you recall, a while back, our engineer came in and presented on the Goose Run watershed, and it was identified that this was an impaired watershed, and DEP is forcing the borough to clean ten percent of the sediment running into this watershed a year. And in large part, this, this DSA project and the drainage project on Erie Street accomplishes that. So, not only are we getting the alley in a better stabilized condition, we're also meeting our regulatory requirements through this, this pilot program. So, this is not yet constructed. It will be implemented in the summer of 2019, or sometime in the spring of 2020.
Justin.
Yes.
This aggregate you said is unbound. Is it just then pressure? So after it's, it's applied, then there would be a steamroller, I guess, coming through?
Yeah, after it's applied, it's rolled out, it's rolled out flat, and that kind of locks it in, in place.
Okay, all right.
So, I'd like to talk a little bit more about, you know, unordained alleys. It's, it's always a hot topic as to, you know, how to address some of the conditions in the unordained alleys. You know, the borough's really limited on, on resources, and, you know, most of these cases, these alleyways have reverted, in some cases at least, back to the property owners. So one of the options for property owners that have the alleys that they would like to see paved is to actually talk to your neighbors adjoining the alley to obtain their permission to bring in a contractor and have it paved while splitting the cost with your, with your neighbors. And we would be happy to facilitate this. All you would have to do is come in and obtain a permit. We're not going to charge you a fee for it. We just want to make sure that the grading and the stormwater flow wouldn't cause any adverse impacts. And, you know, all, of course, all property owners that would participate in that would be encouraged to have a written agreement among those adjoining property owners where the work is, is being completed. So, I mean, it's kind of, you can kind of think of it almost like a shared driveway, in a sense.
So, if, we have potholes. Our location in Pennsylvania is one of the worst states for repetition, freeze, fall cycles, a major contributor to roadway deterioration and potholes. The primary time for the borough to fill potholes is from late winter to early springs, but will fill at any time with weather permitting. Cold patch is the primary material used, and that often, I mean, they, we do our best to fill the potholes, but if there's any kind of water in them or moisture, and with the freeze and fall, it doesn't always hold up well. But we try to go through town and do the best we can with what we have. And if you have any requests for borough-owned roadways, you can call Public Works at six-one-zero-nine-seven-oh-six-five-two-seven, or six-five-two-seven. one zero nine seven oh six five two seven, or email publicworks@pottestown.org. To make a service request for PennDOT roads, High Street, Hanover Street, Farmington, Charlotte Street, Harman Hammer Boulevard, Manatoni Street, State Street, Mervine Street from Charlotte to Washington, West King Street from Manatoni to Route 100, Route 100 and Route 422, you call PennDOT at one eight hundred fixed ROAD, or log into www.penndot.gov and click, or click on Submit Roadway Feedback. Now, I hope this helps, um, everybody that's concerned about the potholes and how the roads are taken care of, and that's all we have for now.
We're happy to answer any, uh, any questions anyone has.
Um, I was just wondering, uh, the system where you have the millings, and, you know, I guess it's applied through, you know, steamrolled, the pressure, whatever it is. Um, is that, is, is there a lot of prep involved with that? Or is, or is that like a one-step system where it fills like tire grooves or something like that? Or do you have to do a lot of prep work to make it flat before you apply that to the, to the surface?
Basically, what we did on the two test, uh, alleys that we did do, you, you put the millings into a, a paving machine, and the paving machine then will apply them in a, in a flat surface, and then we roll them with a roller. If, the millings are in good condition, meaning that there's still emulsion sticking to the stones, eventually some of that will fasten itself to the next stones, and it will knit together. Um, so, all millings are not appropriate for trying to use that, because if the roadway is twenty-some years old, most of that emulsion is, is pretty much dried up or not existing. So, you, it's just like taking stone and trying to roll stone out. So we have to look at the milling, what street they came off, whether it's appropriate to reuse them or not, but it's, it's a pretty basic setup, is to just apply it with a milling, uh, a paving machine and roll it out.
Okay.
And we can also, depending on the a- alley, the grades and everything, we can put it on thicker than what we normally would put, uh, blacktop on. Blacktop we put on two inches and compressed it down to an inch and a half. The millings we put on, in some locations, because of the condition of the alley, it was three, three and a half inches of applied interior. So, it gives us a lot of flexibility if the milling material's in good condition.
Okay, um, s- so, so if the alley has like, you know, groove marks from tires, and it, because maybe it's muddy, or, or, or is it soft material, and, and is groove marks from tires being run in the same spot all the time, is there a lot of prep work to, beforehand to make the alley smooth before you apply this material? Or is it like a one-step system where it fills and, and also repairs?
It, it'll fill in the, the ruts and stuff like that. However, if we know that the base is not at all in good condition, a lot of times you can look at some alleys and, and knowing the trash trucks go down the alleys, uh, if you see mud pumping up through the, the, whatever's there, uh, you know that the base is not in good condition. So I wouldn't necessarily want to pick on that kind of alley to, to try this. We're trying to do this, I mean, there's a lot of logistics that we have to go through as far as the milling, and then where to store them, and then get the contractor to be in position to, uh, dump them into the mil- the paving machine and apply them and roll them. So, storing too much of this stuff could become an issue for us, because we just don't have a lot of storage space, we can just put this stuff down and then go load it back up and reapply it. So, you know, it, we, it worked out in the first two. Last year we did two hours, and it worked out fairly well. We didn't do a lot, we didn't need a lot, so it worked out fairly well. Certainly it would be nice if we can get a, a much greater application going, but I'm still trying to figure out where we can keep all this stuff while we're waiting for the contractor to be able to load it up. But as far as the alley, we, we look at the alley and decide whether it's appropriate thing. If the alley's in too bad a shape because of mud and stuff like that, we're not going to touch it with this.
For potholes, is the cold patch material more expensive, or is it the labor that's more expensive? Just for potholes, not for paving the whole street?
The cold patch, um, has an expense to it, but it's, in the wintertime, typically you can't get hot material. Certainly hot material is the better material, but there, there's again logistics to that. And if you go to the quarry and you, you get a ton of blacktop to run around and start patching little potholes, you've got to get it in the ground and, and roll it out before it cools off. If it gets too cold, then it won't knit again. So, the, the cold patch at least, and especially over the winter months and, and always spring, gives us the ability to go out with a truckload of it, put it in, compact it a little bit, and then move on. Uh, and, and depending on conditions, if you don't have a lot of moisture mixed with it, and we're not going through freeze-thaw, a lot of it will harden to a degree, but it doesn't get as nice as what hot material does once it cools off.
Have you looked into alternate materials for filling potholes? Just like, um, recycled, uh, beer bottles, glass, um, ground-up glass, grades like a sand, they use it in some.
There are, there have been, uh, tests done with ground-up glass mixed with the a- asphalt, it's a small percentage of the asphalt material. Um, it doesn't seem like it's been working out. The glass seems like it's too, uh, smooth a surface for the a- the emulsion to knit to it and hold it together. Um, but I know there's been different, uh, uh, PennDots that, that have looked at that issue and have been experimenting with it. I haven't seen any conclusions yet as far as whether it's something that they're going to mandate. Like the mill, the milling m- material, right now, the quarry will take that stuff back and mix five, seven percent of that back into the new stuff, because it's remixed with, with emulsion again, so it's just as good as it was originally. But, as much as possible, and a lot of our millings go back to the quarry, because we have nowhere to keep it. So, we just have the, the contractor take it back and, and recycle it again.
Um, for PennDOT on Charlotte Street, there is Charlotte and Oak Street at the light. Um, there's a corner store, and there's, um...
The storm inlet.
Yeah, you see that storm thing down there?
Yeah, we, we put barricades around it.
I've seen that, okay.
Yeah, we're taking a look at it to see what, what happened to it, whether, uh, that has happened to that inlet before, so we'll take a look at it, see. Um, I know we've been in touch with PennDOT to, to work together on, on some of these kind of situations, because, um, thorough road is holding their road up, but certainly too, um, they, they, like us, they have a lot going on, so.
Yeah.
We work together, we've worked together on stormwater issues before, and we try and have cooperation, uh, to help out either way.
Okay, I didn't know if I was to call that number, or email them, or put a request in.
We're, we're already working on it.
You already did that, okay.
Very good. Well, thank you all.
Oh, and thank you, Doug, for, um, filling in those potholes that I made my long list. I, I seen them. I, I go back and check. Yeah, good job, thank you.
Yes, I will, thank you.
Park Mobile.
Yeah, so I, I already covered that during my, my manager's report, and, um, the only other thing that I can say about that is we are going to have, uh, wallet cards available at the next meeting, um, that will be, that we should be able to, to hand out to, to those that are new to Park Mobile and want to get a better understanding of how to use it.
Okay. Hill School Quadrivium Project. Mr. Garner.
Sure, the Hill School is, uh, doing a building addition to one of the existing buildings on campus. Uh, the project has actually been in front of the Planning Commission. I think you have, uh, a couple of letters, uh, in your packet.
Mm-hmm.
Planning Commission did recommend to council preliminary final approval, uh, of the project subject to compliance with the engineer's letter. Uh, I believe there are a number of waivers that the Hill School has requested. Uh, Planning Commission did favorably recommend those waivers. Um, if council recalls, there is a requirement to dedicate open space based upon the building size. Um, Planning Commission didn't think it was appropriate to have the Hill School dedicate open space, so Planning Commission is recommending a waiver, uh, of the open space requirement, but instead looking for a fee in lieu of open space. Uh, and hopefully by Monday night, I'll have a proposal for you for the amount of that fee. Um, if there's any questions, Dan, you were at the meeting, so.
We agreed.
They didn't have them, uh, by, by the, the open space? Was there reasoning behind that?
The, well, i- if you look at the property, there, there's quite a bit of open space already, and they really can't dedicate anymore, but they're willing to pay a fee in lieu so that we can use that for some other area in the, within the borough.
Okay, so. The practical problem, Joe, is that it's private property, so if the Hill School dedicated open space up there, it'd be very tough to get access to and really use it by the general public.
Yeah, that was my second thought, whether it was because it was a, a private property. Okay.
Okay, well, this is that for Monday evening, uh, twelve, and the amendment to the norz- noise ordinance. Again, Mr. Garner.
Sure, I think, I think I handed out to everyone, uh, a brief memo with, uh, some information about our existing noise ordinance, and, uh, I guess, concern that, that if the downtown revitalizes, as we hope it does, uh, there's going to be, uh, a number of noise generators that probably won't mesh very well with residents that, that reside in the upper floors of the property. Um, your noise ordinance presently has exemption or exemption requirements within the document in order to address this, to allow for, uh, a vibrant downtown with noises that you would hope would, uh, occur i- in a, in a setting like the borough. Uh, we're suggesting that you add an additional, uh, exemption. Uh, obviously, you, we will need feedback from you as far as the hours the exemption would occur in the downtown district. Uh, staff had felt that potentially the hours of exemption may be different, uh, Sunday through Thursday, they may be expanded hours of exemption on the weekends, you know, Friday and Saturday, so they could go later. Um, so, uh, there are some complaints the police department is starting to get, so we thought we'd try and, uh, nip this in the bud and, and come up with a solution that, uh, would, uh, allow the downtown to develop. So, I'm happy to answer any questions. We would certainly need some guidance from council as far as the hours that the exemption would be in effect in the downtown.
And, uh, we'll ask, have you any thoughts on this at this time? Okay, uh... Well, what I, what I can do is, um, allow you to call in to our borough manager with your thoughts between now and Monday, and then we'll list it for Monday evening action.
I mean, I can, I can expand on that a little bit. Um, you know, the typical, the typical things that would be associated with a vibrant downtown, um, you know, if, 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 uh, a venue wanted to have, uh, out, outdoor music, or even indoor music, the noise ordinance would certainly be problematic for that. And, um, you know, I, I, I think that those are the, kind of the, the general types of noises that, that we would expect to hear, um, in a vibrant downtown, but our ordinance doesn't really allow for that. Would be, would be problematic at, at some point if things continue on the trajectory that, that they are on.
Yeah, I'm on that command, and the two things that were probably most prominent were like live bands with like drums and snares that could easily, you know, transfer through walls, and like, uh, PA systems like, you know, DJs with heavy, heavy bass, uh, that could certainly permeate, not so much, you know, just the standard bar music, I guess would be what I'd call it.
What about dog barking? Like, uh, for an hour, the dog barking for, complete an hour next, next door to you? That would be...
Yeah, I thi- I, I, I believe that's already covered in the ordinance, um, somewhere else, specific to dog barking.
Yeah, so what, the way we frame the language is that any use that, that is legal downtown, permitted use, or is a pre-existing legal non-conforming use that would generate noise associated with that use, would be exempt from the noise ordinance requirements within certain hours. So in other words, if, uh, if a bar or a restaurant had live music, maybe, you know, Friday night or Saturday night, it's eleven o'clock or midnight, maybe other nights it's not so late. But those are the hours we're looking at to allow that type of noise to occur, uh, if that's what you want, so.
If a business had a, an event during the week, um, could they get an exception, or come down and get some type of, uh, exception for that particular event?
Well, you, as council, always have the right to, to waive the requirements for a particular event. Right now, we were looking for a set of hours that you could do it. So, again, it could be, you could make it as late as you want any night, but I think there was some thought that maybe weeknights, you know, maybe you shouldn't have the, the noise, yeah.
But I, I just figured maybe a business would like to have a band come in, and they'll come Tuesday night, you know, and, and, and they want to get like a waiver for that night.
Sure.
You know, would that be possible?
Yes, it would be possible.
Well, even a holiday too, if it would run maybe on a, a weeknight, too.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
So I just want to clarify, this doesn't allow me to drive down High Street and have a party in my own vehicle with my windows down?
No, it does not.
Correct, correct.
Sorry.
Okay, so, uh, if you'll let us know some, pardon?
Justin said he wouldn't stop me.
We're just looking for your thoughts for some general guidelines. So, if you think everything should cease by midnight on Friday and Saturday night, say so. Uh, if you think it should be earlier during the week, say so. But, um, I, I would ask that you call in to our borough manager between now and Monday and give him your ideas, and we'll put it together. And we'll list this for action Monday evening.
And from a timing standpoint, it would be authorization to advertise the ordinance, and then you would adopt it at your May meeting. So, you do have a little time to think about the hours.
Okay. Thirteen is Ricketts Center Roof and Mechanical Unit Replacement.
Yes, so, um, if you recall, uh, we did, uh, put this project out to bid. We were in receipt of a, uh, $200,000, uh, grant from, uh, the Community Development Block Grant Program. Um, and the bids came in higher than, um, than what we have anticipated. Um, so, uh, we did, we did receive, uh, two bids, um, one from, uh, Spots Brothers, uh, for, for $319,277, one from Five Star for $394,000. Um, at this point, uh, given where we are in, in the construction season, um, and the need to, uh, address the roof project, uh, at the Ricketts Center, uh, we would be recommending to council that they award this bid at this time. Um, that being said, given the fact that it is over budget, uh, Michael Lenhardt, our Parks and Recreation Director, has been working diligently, uh, to try to find some grant sources that can help us, um, cover, cover that cost. So, we are going to go back to, um, the original grant that we have through the Community Development Block Grant Program and request additional, um, funding. But council should know that that could possibly impact our most recent, um, request for Community Development Block Grant Funding, which was for, um, stormwater inlets. Um, so, uh, it, it could compete against each other. Uh, we may, you know, get half of what we requested on both of them, for all, for all that we know. Um, that being said, we also did, we are going to be applying for a Montgomery County 2040 grant as well to cover the construction, um, overage on, on this project. And, um, uh, we're hopeful that we'll at least be able to get, get one of those grants to help, help make up the difference. Um, if we don't, um, we will have to, uh, tap into the borough's, uh, general fund reserves to pay the additional $100,000. Um, and I just, I just want to note that the price tag sounds high. Um, this isn't just a roof replacement, but it also involves replacement of four, um, HVAC units and replacement of a lot of the ductwork as well, um, and the electrical that goes into those units. So, um, it was one of those things where the roof that we're replacing is actually underneath those units, and the units weren't bad shape anyway. We had to crane the units off the roof. Um, so, uh, we're, we're taking the opportunity to just go ahead and fix both those, those issues, which, um, you know, should, should give another twenty or so years of life to those, those, the, the roof and the HVAC. So, any questions about that?
You know, I, I think, uh, one of the Finance Committee meetings, we talked about this, and that, uh, if we don't start it now, the price could probably go exceedingly higher. And, uh, th- this being the time of year when roofing projects are, are being done, it might be wise to go forward and contract it now. If we don't lock in a contract today, it's probably going to... If we don't lock in a contract today, it's probably going to cost more in June or in July, when all the contractors are busy. So. Would you agree to go forward with it if we do?
Yes, I would.
Okay.
That's your pleasure.
Have you any questions on it? If we don't get the additional grants, it will have to come out of reserves to pay for it. And if we don't, it's one of those, pay me now or pay me later. Okay, we'll list it for action Monday evening.
And just, just to be crystal clear, we're recommending going with the low bidder on this.
Of course.
Thank you.
Okay, Bark for Life.
Yeah, but... I do. Give me one minute here. Okay, so this is the American Cancer Society, their, their plan for the annual Bark for Life, which they will take place on April 27th, 2019, in, in Memorial Park. They would also like to have a very small beer garden at the event in order to boost participation, and they've changed the hours of the event from one to five. So they're asking for council approval of the beer garden in Memorial Park.
Okay. No questions, we'll list that for Monday. Fifteen is a rally to be on West Street for May 11th.
Okay, so we received this application recently for a street closure on, on West Street between Franklin and Hale Streets on May 11th, 2019, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. Rain date is the same. The purpose for, for conducting this, this closure is for a gun violence rally, I believe is, that, that is what it says.
Okay, we'll list this for Monday.
You, you can read it and interpret it the same way that, that I am, so be free to take a look at it.
Okay, Memorial Day Parade.
Okay, this is the Memorial Day Parade with the date of 27th of May, 2019. Assembly time will be from 8:30 to 9:00 a.m., with a start time at, at 10:00 a.m., terminate at 11:00 a.m. And the, the route will assemble at Goodwill Fire Company. It will travel on, on High Street, north on, on Manitani Street to Memorial Park at the, at the entrance there. Number of float floats and two, two to three vans will be in, in participation. And this is the, the only parade where the borough covers the cost, and I just do want to note that total cost this year came in at $6,119. The, the borough has $4,000 budgeted for this parade, so we'll want to look at getting that corrected in the next budget, assuming the borough wants to continue to fund this, which I think they do.
So, that understood. Council has moved in the past that it would waive no fees, with the exception of the Memorial Day Parade. And we determined that it would cost more to do, transfer the money in, from one department to another than to just waive it, so, since we're paying ourselves. All right, so we'll list that for approval for Monday evening. Seventeen is the Independence Day Parade.
Yes, so the Rotary, Rotary Club of Pottstown is going to be sponsoring this, this parade on July 4th, 2019, no rain date. They will assemble at 9:30 a.m., start at 10:50 a.m., and terminate at 11:30. They will assemble on High Street at, at Madison and Adams, and they will travel on Adams Street, on Hi, on, on High Street from Adams Street to Manitani, I'm sorry. Six floats, two vans, six vehicles.
Are one of those floats for the mayor? Will she have her own float? If so, I want to be on it with her.
I ride, I walk with the big duck.
I don't know about that. We'll talk. Your people get with my people.
All right.
All right.
You could put a, a pool on a flatbed, and she could be on a float in the pool. Okay. Anyhow, we'll list that for Monday. Eighteen, Go Fourth Festival, also on July 4th.
Yes, so this was okayed by the, the Park and Rec Department. They are requesting a beer garden at their festival as well. You know, they, their beer vendor will have ramp certified servers and observe all the due diligence in ensuring proper ID inspection before alcoholic beverages are served. And just some information on the festival, it's July 4th, it will be from 11:30 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., feature live music, local food, family activities, and a 20-minute duration of fireworks. I think I heard from the organizers this morning that they are still trying to raise money. Their goal is...
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five thousand, and I think they've raised about 20 so far.
Okay. No questions, we'll list that for Monday. Nineteen, we need to assign a deputy emergency management coordinator.
Yeah, so although this isn't a, a requirement by the state, and it's not a state-appointed position like the, or governor-appointed position like the emergency management coordinator, we think it's a good idea to have a deputy emergency management coordinator in the event that the emergency management coordinator falls ill, or has to leave or is out of town for any other reason. So we'd like to recommend Kevin Yurger as the deputy emergency management coordinator.
Okay, no questions, we'll list that for Monday. Twenty, board vacancies. Harb, we have two five-year terms, and we have two applicants.
Correct.
Okay. And we'll put that on Monday's schedule. Twenty-one, Harb administratively approved, 1290 High Street. And we, in your packet, we have the Harb agenda from March 26th about that. Twenty-two is the Harb 64 King Street, and this was denied. Might the owner of the property be here, or anyone to speak to this? Okay. Hearing and seeing nothing, we'll list this for Monday evening. Twenty-three, time for comments from citizens present. And note, this is subject to a three-minute time limit.
Okay, Darlene Bainbridge, please.
Good day, council. I'm here in light of the news in our community. I was really hoping that more residents would come out to spook on this, though I do feel a little guilty now, speaking on the negativity after so many wonderful things that are happening in town. I do first want to acknowledge everything that is happening, and those are the things that I champion on social media, I talk to amongst my friends, I encourage in every group that I talk to to come out to Pottstown, to embrace the new businesses, to come see everything that's happening in our town. I can't help, though, to be consumed by the latest headlines. I think there's a lot of deals about children, and that's something that's upsetting to me. I have children in the, in the middle school and the high school. My son is, doesn't seem to be much affected by the middle school, even though it seems to be on the front page every other day with things that are happening there. I know their teachers, I can't say enough good things about their teachers, the administrators as well. I think they're very involved and they're very passionate about their children. I, I guess I'm looking to council and to our community and our, our police force and our school district to step up to, to do something, to let us know as community members what we can do. I don't want to steer walking the streets of my town. I can't help but think that the elements that are coming in are not part of our community. I, I see by the addresses of a lot of these people that they are not from Pottstown. I've heard rumors that there are a lot of children in our school districts who are brought in to go to our school during the week, and then they're shipped back to their towns, to Philadelphia or surrounding communities, so they're really not even a part of this community. I'd like to get them out, get them out of our community and restore what Pottstown used to be when we were growing up, when, when we had places like the Ricketts Center where kids could go and be safe and, you know, make new friends and get involved in their community. And I, I still, I know that those families still exist in town, the families who I grew up with. I know because I, I walk the community a lot, I ride my bike a lot, and so I know that they're out there. It's just this criminal element and this violence that's coming in is pushing everybody else away. And I, I'm born and raised here, and I have people who I grew up with ask me, why are you still in Pottstown? Why aren't you running? Why, why don't you get out, get your children out, it's irresponsible for you to, to raise them there? And I insist that we're going to overcome this, but I, I, I think we all need some guidance, and I guess I'm looking to council and the police department to really get strong on this and not be afraid and get those out who don't belong here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Nick, Philip Ades.
Oh, that's all of it.
Oh, yeah, okay, oh, great.
What is it?
Yep.
Pardon me. Okay, councilor's general discussion. How about Counselor Lebedinsky?
Um, next week, next week we'll be introducing a, a new committee that's going to help refine some of the processes that we have installed in, not only council, but in the borough and some of the ways of working. I think it's going to be really kind of exciting, it's going to streamline a lot of the paperwork that we're currently swamped in now. So you'll hear about that on Monday. I'm kind of excited about it. Hopefully they'll start leading in other departments as well, and make things a lot easier for everybody, not only in town, but also the employees as well.
Good. Vice President Cup.
I was at the Culverdale Railroad, the groundbreaking, that was really nice, and the trains are amazing. They're so beautiful inside and so well-done. And that was, that was a fun weekend, and there's so much going on in Pottstown that you need to get on the website, and the mayor has so much, so much on her site, so it'd be good for people to, to really look into that and have a, enjoy Pottstown this summer.
Oh, and, and to that, for the groundbreaking, I'd like to thank you and Counselor Lindsay for sharing a shovel with me. Not much of a groundbreaking, but it was a great event. Counselor Proskel.
Well, I enjoyed the, the warmer weather this time of year, but it also means parts of my neighborhood go crazy, so it's, but why I handle it is probably the best thing to do, is just, don't become confrontational, just call our police department, 610-323-1212. Even if it's something that you, you don't think it's, you know, over the top criminal behavior, it doesn't hurt to just have them come out and check it out.
Great. Counselor Lindsay.
Okay. So, Dawn, I did a little research on your bike lanes. And Courtney, I think it's June, Courtney, I think she said June, she's going to do a presentation regarding it. Am I right, Justin?
I believe, I believe so.
Yeah. Because I, I asked the question, so I looked it up for Pennsylvania, and Pennsylvania as a whole has bike lane laws, but I wanted to see if there was information that we can give our residents. And Courtney said, yes, a pamphlet will be going out, and also it will be on the borough website. So.
Hopefully the parents will bring this to the attention of their kids, and maybe, maybe we'll see kids at least following the laws. Or, or have the baby carriages out, out of the bike lanes as well. That, I think, is really kind of dangerous as well. I know, it's dangerous.
I thought about you.
Yeah, that's, that's something we're working on in, in conjunction with the school district, get better information out there, let people know, like, first, where the bike lanes are, and then, you know, second, how to use them. They're also going to be conducting a, a Bike to School Challenge as well, where kids will get prizes for riding their bike to school, and a lot of other kind of interactive things to get the kids accustomed to riding bicycles, whether it's on their, on a trail or on a roadway.
Thank you, Justin, for that segue. So Rupert Elementary School is supposed to be having a bike rodeo that's May 1st, and like Justin said, they're going to be giving out prizes. So the week from May 4th through the 6th, they're going to be giving out prizes for the kids. They got the bike rack already out there, so guys utilize that bike lane. I'm gonna buy a bike, so I can utilize it myself.
Is that the event that I agreed to be in the dog tank for?
I'm not sure, but let me know.
Let me know.
I will. And don't forget about our awesome trails. We have our awesome trails out there, so make sure, and get your bikes, and ladies and gentlemen, please stroll your kids out there on that bike train. So I was, I volunteered in the middle school for lunch, and I was there four hours. I was there for the fifth grade through the eighth grade. So the fifth graders, woo, their lunchroom was like, ah! And the sixth grader was like, ah! And the seventh graders was like, ah! And the eighth grader was like, I'm just chilling. So I got to talk with some of the kids and everything, you know, I sat, talked to them. And this was all under David Charles' organization. It was myself, David Charles, and two pastors. They were in, and we had, you know, we just were sitting down, talking to the kids, some of them were a little standoffish, like, what are you doing here? Why are you sitting with me? So we did that. I'm also going to be walking, doing the walking Rupert for the kids, doing the walking...
School basketball.
There you go, thank you. I got you, thank you. That's teamwork. So I'm going to be doing that next week, both Wednesdays, doing that. Let me see, oh, and April 11th, I'll be at Rupert. I'm just busy at Rupert. I'll be at, reading to the first graders, be doing that. And there is a, so like the resident was saying about, we all know what's going on in the schools and everything, but I will, when I was there for the fifth grade, when I was there for lunch, I seen Stephen, the superintendent, Roger Ricas, he was there. I talked to the principal, I talked to these teachers, I spoke with the, they have lunchroom attendants watching the cafeteria, and if you don't walk a mile in these people's shoes, you don't know. So I'm, let me just give a shout-out to all of those people in, in the middle school that's taking care of you guys' kids. Look at me, you guys' kids. Okay? So I'm just saying that to say, God bless y'all, 'cause I was there, I went home, took a nap. After I left, I took a nap. My husband said, what's wrong? I said, I'm tired. I was there with the kids, so what you do? I said, just talk. They, they drained me. But they loved that I was there, so if you, but you have to get your credits, you know, your credentials, you have to have background checks and everything, so I'm clean as whistle. So you have to in order to be with these kids. I just was saying, just in case any councilors want to do it. What else? I think I'm done, almost. Wait a minute. Oh, Coldbrook, the, the little, I'm sorry. You know how long, little... So those councilors that wasn't there, I, I got some leads for you guys, so the ones that do not have one, like Justin and everybody, you don't get one, because you already have one of those. And I also went to Coldbrook. I'm almost done. I went to, they had a ceremony in Reading Museum, and they had a, a nice little ceremony, it was really nice. in Reading Museum. And they had a nice little ceremony, it was really nice. And they showed a presentation, and Justin was in the presentation. And he did a good job, just wanted to say kudos to him for seeing the connection for the train and for the carousel in Pottstown. And I'm done.
Okay. Counselor Paez, top that.
Nothing.
Nothing?
You can say something.
Counselor Kirkland.
Nothing.
Nothing?
Nothing.
Okay.
Mayor Hendrick.
Small something, or two small somethings. So, I know it is much easier to walk across the street and not cross in the crosswalk and to cross when light is red. And I'm guilty of it too. I'm lazy, I'm going to cross. But what I don't do is I don't look down at my cellphone while I'm walking across the street and not paying attention to traffic. So, I would appreciate if you are crossing the street to be aware of your surroundings. I really don't want to be on the front page of the Mercury for hitting someone coming back from Borough Council meetings. It is very difficult to see in, on some areas of High Street that are not lit. And if you are walking across the street at night, someone is going to hit you. So, please, if you have to walk in the bike lanes, Dawn will give you permission. Secondly, I want to present an idea to Stephen Rodriguez, but I would like some input from the businesses. I was thinking about a reward system for our school district, so elementary through high school, something like Pottstown bucks. You can have, each business could have their own, you know, value of a certificate. Kids can get rewards, get points, which add up to dollars, that they can go get a soda at the corner store, or a free art class, or, you know, a session at Splitting Edge. Eggs and Henry's will teach you how to make your own omelet. But this way, I need some input from the businesses as to what they would be willing to possibly give as Pottstown bucks and what they feel a dollar would be worth for, you know, what their meals would be worth, what they'd like to see. So, I'm thinking community service events and things like that. Kids can build up points, rack up some Pottstown bucks, and enjoy the things that we have in our community. So, you could email me or Facebook me, I'd appreciate it.
Even carousel bucks or mini golf?
Mini golf.
Something like that.
Yep, that's what I was thinking.
Okay, thank you. So, you don't do distracted jaywalking?
No.
Okay.
That's not even jaywalking, it's walking across the crosswalks.
Okay. One thing I do want to mention to everybody, I want to bring it to your attention. This month, April 23rd, the county commissioners are coming out to have a town meeting with all of you. And I do mean all of you. It's over at the, yeah, West, or the Montgomery County Community College, over on College Drive. They'll be starting at 7:00 p.m. In addition, if I have my information correct, county has new voting machines this year. And they will be having a demonstration of the voting machines at the community college at 6:00 p.m. that same night, that's April 23rd. See you all there. I have nothing more. Meeting adjourned.